...on online.
We're now live.
Great.
We're not live, or we are?
We are.
We're live.
Welcome! To the May 23 Neshova Regional's Regular School Committee meeting. Tonight, we're in the Center School in Stowe. We just had a wonderful meeting with our staff roundtables. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:01. Tonight is our reorganization meeting. First of all, to love to welcome our two new school committee reps. Elaine Santalupo from Stowe and Mike Hurash from Bolton. So, thank you both, congratulations. We're looking forward to lots of collaboration, debate, and moving things forward. In the meantime, this is our reorganization meeting. We need to elect a new chair, a new vice chair, a new secretary, and we need to approve the school committee meeting calendar, our calendar of meetings. So, before we entertain nominations, I just want to do really quick high level what the duties of each function is, so everybody is aware. The duties of the chairperson. The chairperson of the school committee is one-eighth of the school committee. The chair does not have any more power or influence over any decisions that are made than any other individual school committee member. The responsibility of the chair really is to run the meetings appropriately, according to Robert's rules, to appoint the subcommittees, call special meetings when they're necessary, act as public spokesperson for the committee and decisions of the committee, and conduct school committee meetings in orderly fashion, among other items, and lots of additional fun things. The duties of the chairperson is to act as the chair in the absence of the chairperson and fill other duties. So, for instance, this year, if the chair had 16 things to do, it could be delegated to the vice chair in order to offload some of that work, or you guys would get phone calls saying, "Can you take on some extra work?" The duties of the secretary are to keep an accurate journal of all school committee meetings, comply with state law and community policy. Alida performs a lot of that for us, but Lynn is this year's current secretary, and that's why you'll notice in some of our meetings that she's furiously taking notes because she's also tracking things that we say we're going to do even if a vote hasn't been taken because the meetings don't necessarily detail everything, but Lynn will follow up on that. So, with that, let's open up elections for chair of the Neshova Regional School Committee for FY19. Kathy?
I nominate Lorraine Masco.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Chickens?
Do you accept cows?
I absolutely will accept it, thank you very much for that. I think I don't want to accept it. Yes, I do, yes. Vice chair, any nominations? Personally, I'd love to nominate Kathy, just because it works really well.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any other, do you want to accept it?
Yes, I accept it.
Okay. Any other nominations? And secretary?
I nominate her.
Oh.
I second. Better to turn off the...
That's right.
All in favor?
She hasn't accepted, though.
Shall I be profiled?
Sure, you know what, we can, yes, but we can still...
We can circle back.
Yep, we can circle back when she comes in. So, in order to move this forward, Alida, you were kind enough to give me, we could make a motion to do the two, the chair and the vice chair. So, I need someone to move to not...
The nomination?
Yep. So, you want to move to elect whoever.
I move to elect Lorraine Masco as the 2017-2018, 2018-2019 school committee chair. And it was seconded by...
Yep, and all you have to do is say the next one.
Okay.
We can do them together.
Lorraine Masco will...
No, you're moving, I'm giving you the example from last year.
This is very complicated, I know you are.
You're also moving to elect Kathy Kodean.
I was going to say that, as the 2018-2019 school committee vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Steve seconded. All those in favor? It's seven to, seven, okay. So, it passes.
Seven to all.
Yep, and a missing person, so, okay, thank you for that. All right, moving on, we've got work to do tonight, folks. We need to take a look at the calendar for next year, it's in the meeting packet. So, these are the proposed dates of the regular school committee meetings. That doesn't mean we won't be adding extra meetings either during the budget cycle or when something pops up. So, I want you to take a look at that. Anything in green is a meeting for the school committee. If you have any questions, concerns, only, I did have a question. I know in November, we only have one because of Thanksgiving, but I would like for us to just keep in the back of our minds, we may need to add one. And I just don't think one meeting in November is enough, but given Thanksgiving...
Yeah, in that time of year.
In that time of year. So, let's just keep it, you know, play it by ear. If we have to add them, just know that we talked about it earlier, at this point.
We did this year.
We've added in the past when we needed to. So, if everybody is good with the calendar, I need someone to move to accept.
I move to accept the calendar, I'm excited for this school year, 2018 to 2019.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? It's unanimous, the motion passes. Moving on, thank you for that. Citizens' comments, do we have any citizens who would like to comment? Not anything on our agenda? We don't. So, my updates really quickly. Our new folks, make sure you signed up for Charting the Course. That is, for those who are not aware, are familiar with it, the Mass Association of School Committees provides an introductory full-day course to all school committee members who are new and those of us who want a refresher, and kind of seeps the new members in how you do what you do and how it works and answers questions, it's a wonderful resource. And the beautiful thing is, it's only $25, so, it doesn't impact the budget. The other thing is, now that we have a new seated committee, we're going to be looking at the school committee manual. There are some updates that we're going to need to make. So, for, I know our two new folks, you have gotten a link for it, if you could read through that. It's brand-new, we just recently adopted it, so, I'm going to put it on an upcoming agenda for us to discuss. If there's anything else that we think we need to add, I know that the reports need to go in there.
Yep.
The budget and more subcommittee reports that we agreed to. So, we'll put those in there, but that's our, kind of our, I don't like to use the word buggled, but that's what it is. It keeps us honest, it keeps us all focused and moving in the right direction, and when we have people rotating off and coming on, it keeps us consistent with the work that we're doing. I am going to ask that we all, when we vote to adopt it, we sign it. Probably more ceremonial than anything, but I think it's important.
Can we get to keep the ball quite bad?
You can absolutely keep the pen. You may have to reimburse the district because we are very respectful of that budget. And then, goal-setting meeting. We're confirmed for June 12. Unless there's a major reason not to, I'd like us to start at 5:00 PM, if that's possible. And it is in Boylston, we have the details for you. The goal-setting session is a workshop, so that means we wouldn't be doing the traditional layout of our agenda that we normally do. People are welcome to come and watch, but it really is just a school committee building workshop, okay? And I think that is all I have, so I will pass it over to Isabel. Is this your last meeting with us?
It is my last meeting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, that sounds weird, but...
Yeah, no, I know, I know what you mean.
You're on your way, huh?
Yeah, it's bittersweet, bittersweet. I had my last call today.
Was it awful?
No, 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 it wasn't. It was like...
Oh, good, thank goodness.
So, end of the era. Okay, so, I'll start with athletics. The high school regular season comes to an end, the regular spring season comes to an end on June 4, and playoffs will begin later in the week for the girls lacrosse team. The baseball team has improved, oh, sorry, that's not, for the right thing, okay. The baseball team has improved to 11 and 5, and has clinched the league title in a postseason berth. The team celebrated senior day this week and will travel to April this weekend to play in a tournament at Trinity Stadium. The softball team has clinched a playoff spot, as they secured second place in the league. They will host Algonquin on Friday for their senior day. The girls lacrosse team is still fighting for a playoff spot with two games left this week. They are celebrating their senior night tonight as they host North Middlesex. The boys lacrosse team is 10-5 and has clinched a playoff spot. The team celebrated senior night on Monday night with a big win over Lemonster. The girls tennis team has made the playoffs with an 8-5 record. The boys tennis team is still searching for a playoff spot with three matches left. If they win all three matches, they make playoffs. The track teams completed the regular season, the girls team won the league championship, and we have members of both teams competing in the district meet this weekend. The unified track team competed in the Central Mass Sectional Meet on Monday. The team did well and have members moving on to the state meet next week. The annual Do-It-Produce relay will take place on June 7 at the high school track. From the music department, this past Monday, about 130 students from kindergarten to senior year of high school came together for a great night of choir with our first annual district choir night. I heard it was a lovely and lots of, like, a very fun event. Tonight, the Hale Middle School is presenting their spring concert at 7:00 PM in the Hale Auditorium. This upcoming Friday and Monday, members of the music programs from all of our schools will be taking place in Memorial Day ceremonies. From Luther Burbank and the high school marching the streets of Lancaster and Stowe to Hale Center and Florence Sawyer Schools performing for the students of those schools on Friday. And on Saturday, June 2, the high school choir will once again perform at the Relay for Life at the high school. On that note, Relay for Life will take place on the high school track on Saturday, June 2. The music year will end with Florence Sawyer concerts on June 5, 7, and 12, Mary Rollinson's concert on June 7, and our high school ensembles wishing a final goodbye at graduation on June 10. The annual eighth grade trips to Washington DC will leave in the coming weeks with Hale Middle School departing this Tuesday. And our seniors wrap up their final week of high school on Friday. Senior awards night will be Monday, June 4 at the high school, and graduation is June 10 at the DCU Center in Worcester. Underclassman awards night is Tuesday, June 12.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Really appreciate the global update you just gave us. There seemed to be something on every single school in there. What, how did that change?
How did I get information on other schools?
I really love it, yeah.
It's actually a really easy process. All you have to do is go to the school's website, look at the letters from the principal, email faculty if you're interested. So, there's sometimes I send an email just to the elementary school principals just to see what they're doing.
So, whoever comes in after you, are you going to chat with them about the value?
Yes, I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning to outline the process.
Wonderful, thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions? Kudos for Isabel.
Just kudos, thank you, great job. And I want to echo what Lorraine said, it's good to have the big picture across the district and really appreciate that effort you put into doing that, to give us the big picture and see how things are connected. So, thanks so much, and best of luck to you moving forward.
Thanks.
So, if everyone else has done, I would like to say something too. I think, and I said this to you earlier and to your mom too, Mom, you've done an amazing job, just an amazing job with her. You know, I mentioned to you how your sense of positive energy just shines through with everything that you do and your level of professionalism. And I know I cited tonight the one meeting that we had an angry parent at, and I remember Isabel having to report out immediately and that it was such a level of professionalism and poise and sophistication, and you just represent everything we want from all of our kids, Isabel, you really do. And I think you've just been an amazing asset, and we have loved having you around the stable. So, we have a little gift, when you open this up, you'll have to take a very close look at the little logo because I think it's somewhere where you're going to nest. We'd like to pass this along, we want to say thank you so much.
Thank you also.
We wish you the very, very best. Congratulations, Isabel.
It's been lovely to be here.
Oh, I wonder if that's true.
You don't stay for the whole meeting.
That's the nice part, right?
Yeah, okay. So, Lynn, congratulations, you have been nominated to be the secretary for the FY18-19 school year. That's what happens. Would you like to accept?
Sure.
Thank you.
I move to elect Lynn Pliddy as the 2018-2019 school committee secretary.
Thank you. Elaine seconded, Kathy, and all those in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. Put your hand, are you, okay, thank you. Good Lord, what a night, what a night settling. All right, so, next, we have superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll just go through quickly tonight. I've got two pictures, and it kind of springs from what Isabel was speaking about earlier, so I'll wait for Alida to put them up here. District activity, and I thought I would focus just on the two things, to the unified track, and we've got a lovely picture of that, and you're right, the Neshova sings was very, very cool. So, we'll just take a really quick, quick look at those. And I think one of the things I thought was so special about the unified track was the fact that you all did a send-off before they, as they left, remember?
Yeah, they had a little pep talk, it was very cool.
It was very, very cool. And I think the Chieftain Press had tweeted out immediately thereafter, so if you follow them, that's the choral group, but if you follow the Chieftain Press, take a look, they have, on Twitter, they had a wonderful feed there of the kids going through the hallway and all the hand-slapping and high-fiving, it was just amazing.
And the teachers are very supportive of that, too.
There they are.
We had some people come in class late, and they said, "Oh, you wrapped the pep talk." I'm like, "Okay, that's great," or they all...
So, there's our team, and there's a couple of really neat pictures out there, if you see them, for winning their different sports, it was just great. So, hats off to everyone, we had a lot of people involved in this, from the school district, above and beyond our students, so hats off to everybody. And the other picture is, this is the finale, which was just show-stopping at Neshova sings. It was the first time they'd done this, it was the first annual, and a choir for every school, and you can take a look, if you can look closely, at the, some of the smallest people right up to the three high school choral groups that presented, and then they all came together. You can see one of the directors down below, but then there were two others behind her because it was such a large group to conduct, but it was an amazing evening. And so, special note of thanks to everybody involved with that particular evening. For the first one, it was, I thought, just super. Second thing, moving along, nurses, I just want to give a note of congratulations to four of our district school nurses who recently achieved status of recognition for becoming nationally certified school nurses. This has required a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of professional development to take a national exam, and so we want to say thank you to them. I think sometimes our nurses are unsung heroes in our buildings. They take care of our students, they take care of our staff, they just do an amazing job, and they're just such a critical component to the fabric of NRSD. So, we want to congratulate Julie Henley, she's of course at the Emerson Wing at Florence Sawyer, T.D. Hill at the high school, Carla Dumas at Center School, Rosemary Solder at Hale School. So, hats off to our four nurses for achieving this incredible certification. District improvement plans, a third topic. We've got drafts that are prepared, and we'll be circulating them at the 12th meeting when we talk about our workshop and our goals and such, and you could take a look at the direction that the district is looking at moving for the next school year. This is not something that was done in isolation with the superintendent in a back room. This was involving a lot of different players, our administrators were involved, our teaching and learning units were involved, a lot of different players were involved in building it. We try to keep some consistency in some places that were obvious, like the literacy program will be moving into year four of year five, so some of that will be the same. You'll see where the safety piece, of course, is involved in goal number two. So, we'll talk about that at some length at the next one, but it's ready to go, the draft is out, and you can take a look at a little bit more detail on the 12th. School council visits, I'd like to say, it's just been such a joy to visit them. I was at the high school the other night, and what I found interesting was there were almost more students there than there were adults at that particular meeting. They brought so much to the table, and you know, I was saying to them that night, the level, again, Isabel, and then goes back to what I said to you earlier, the level of professionalism that that school brings for its students is just uncanny. And just, there's so much pride that you feel when you watch our kids, and I would say the same thing around that school council visit. They were just exceptional in what they brought to the table that night. So, special thanks to all of them. School committee goal-setting, you've already brought that up, so I won't go into a lot of detail on that, but we do have a book, and I think that, Alida, do we bring it for tonight for distribution? This is just to let you know, this is a book that we are focusing on as a school administrative team looking at our work for next year. This is a book called The Innovator's Mindset by George Kurls. This is somebody, I know Kathy, you've been to one of his sessions before. He's presented in Massachusetts to a couple of places, and he's presented across the country. And he just brings a really good, common-sense approach to digital literacy and the importance of innovative thinking. And we're going to be taking a look at, exactly as he said, if you take a look at the front cover, the whole notion of empowering learning, of unleashing talent, and leading in a culture of creativity. So, we just wanted to give you a copy of that. Not that we were looking to do a book study on it or anything like that, but this is what we're going to be using next year as an administrative team, so we thought we would just give it to you for the purpose of taking a quick look at it.
I would jump in and take it one step further and say, if you could get through a few chapters just to get the flavor of this, it's going to help our goal-setting session just as far as, you know, kind of getting out of the same old, same old, which is one of the reasons why we go off-site. So, if you can, it's not difficult reading at all. Please try to get through a bunch of this. I'm probably going to say that you will likely find there's various areas of your personal lives, to professional lives, that this will impact. So, please do try to read a few chapters of it and get a flavor for the intent of it.
The other thing I'd say too, when I was going through reading it, there are a number of additional resources that, like, are YouTube videos or whatever. When I was reading through it, I was going online and watching those, and there's some really interesting ones there. And you may agree with it, you may not agree with it, but it will provide a bit of an underpinning here for work.
Thank you for that.
So, that's that, and that's it for me for tonight.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Maroney, we have got our inter, well, our business manager's report, because you're going to speak to us about the FY18 April report and the treasurer's report. So, turn it over to Pat.
So, there is April results of operations. You can see, it looks like we are moving in the direction that we may have a little bit of money left in the end.
Oh, gosh.
Like I said, this is as of the end of April. There are other things that have come to light in the month of May, which I will discuss at the next meeting. I should have a projection for the next meeting, and we'll make some decisions as to, you know, where we're going to spend any money at year-end, like, how much is going into stabilization, how much is going into OPEH, if any, if, how many, you know, if any additional funds could be spent in them that won't actually ultimately end up in D and D.
Maybe.
I'd like to put something in there. The next report that I have is...
Can I stop you? I'm sorry, Pat, you're so efficient. Does anybody have any questions on this document? Now's the time to ask.
I have one question, just in general, is the budget still frozen?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So, only essential expenditures are happening, I mean, if they need supplies to continue with their curriculum, they can brush this up. I have a...
And that goes through the principal and then through you?
Yes, yes, that's what it goes.
Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions?
I guess...
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Some of this is just because I'm new, but are the salaries included in the building line items? So, like, the salaries that were paid during this period would be in there?
Yes, they would be.
Okay. Should I keep going, or are the people...
Yeah.
And then, I had a couple of questions about some of the numbers that are in this specific report. On the substitute teachers line, I know last month, or last time you came, you talked a little bit about why there's a deficit there. I know the budget for next year is flat for substitute teachers at 440, so do we anticipate to have a problem again next year, or do you think this is a one-time thing?
Well, that happens to be one of those accounts where it can be up and down every year. For fiscal year 18, we put a little bit more money into that only for two reasons, actually, because we increased the rate for the daily subs. But there are actually two lines within substitutes, and one is a long-term sub-line. So, and that would be what we would use to cover maturity leaves, any kind of medical, long-term medical leave, where we would have to pay somebody to come in. At the same time, we would be paying somebody's salary, so that's what the purpose of this line is.
Right, but do you see the same thing happening next year?
It's, you don't know. It's totally unpredictable. Yeah, because somebody could make, yeah, could get pregnant this summer. I mean, we have no idea, like, it's a total guessing game.
And that's the most expensive line of the two.
We generally base it on averages over the course of the year. That's really the only way that you can do it because you don't, you really don't know what it's going to look like from year to year.
Okay, yeah, just to know, if it was budgeted as flat, I could know if that would meant that in previous years, that it was a surplus, and then this year it was just, that's what we're assuming.
If we look at it, and it seems to be trending that we haven't got enough money there, then I would recommend that we bump it up even a little bit more.
And she would come to the school committee.
During the budget...
During the budget season, we could be doing that.
Elaine, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, my last question was just about insurance and benefits. I was surprised to see that there's a projected surplus there because that's always a very expensive item that is increasing beyond...
Well, insurance and benefits for us, we budgeted pretty closely last year as far as for, like, health benefits. $115,000 is, we had a significant savings in our liability insurance.
Okay.
Some of our rates dropped, so...
That we didn't anticipate.
That we didn't anticipate.
And I think that's one thing we always have to keep in mind, things happen after we do our budget that, you know, we can't count on. Even this year, as we're moving forward, we've got a budget based on what we thought might be House numbers, the Governor's numbers, or whatever. But by the time it goes to House and Senate and Conference Committee, and then finally comes on the other side, that could throw our budget out a couple hundred thousand dollars, quite frankly. So, you don't really know, when you set your budget, you really don't know what you've got coming in and not coming in. So, that's why your number is always going to be a little bit wonky at the end. It can go either way at the end, you just don't know. This year happens to be going this way, but trending this way, but it could easily be the other way, quite frankly.
Yeah, you can't predict whether or not someone is going to take our health insurance, or whether or not we'll have a good year as far as risk for workers' comp or for liability.
And our workers' comp has come under control. A few years ago, it was out of control, and I remember every year hearing, you know, well, workers' comp is, you know, up again, it's up again, and I think a lot of the additions for the facilities team has really helped to reduce that, so, good news.
And the other thing, too, is you don't always know, like, when you're hiring new staff, you don't know whether they're going to be taking advantage of the benefits or not. And so, that also plays a key part in this, too. So, all good questions.
Any other questions? I'm not, I don't want to call any other new member out unless the new member has a question.
The new member does have a question.
I thought the new member might.
It looks like technology for the, the budget for the technology and the total expenditure in Combert is pretty close in line. Is that because the technology has already been accounted for earlier in the year?
Most of our technology purchases happen at the beginning of the year.
Right in the summer.
Yeah, because all of that new equipment that we need has to be purchased usually in July so that they can have everything installed, and then a lot of the services that we have... And then um, a lot of the services that we have for um, you know, each and that and everything, that would all be accounted for as far as uh, we would come to the funds, so we know pretty much where this is going to land and year end.
Any other questions on this report? Thank you, thanks for the questions. Pat, thanks a lot, we'll let you go to the next report.
Yeah, the next report is actually the treasurer's report, which is recommended, was recommended by the audit, this the fiscal year seventeen audit. I don't know, I don't remember if it was on the list of the reports that were recommended last meeting. Off the top of my head, I don't remember if they were, but I know this was a recommendation of by the auditors. And so we're going to present this every month as I do this um results of operation, so that you can have a pretty good idea of what we have in the bank. So this is for the month of March and I have the month of April as well.
So someone looking at this, what do they need to know? Someone who's looking at this report who doesn't really know what they're looking at, can you interpret it?
Sure. Um, if you look at the bottom, there's a grouping of all of the different um banks that we have funded. And basically, um, what what the treasury does is at the end of the month, there are certain expenditures that come from different banks for different reasons. And um, as you can see, some of them, um, the Unibank, the General Operating Fund, uh, there's a lot of money in there and that would be for most of our operations in the district. Um, the Unibank OPEB right now, that is where our OPEB money is sitting and waiting.
Shouldn't it be more, so I have a question on that one. So I thought we set aside that first year a hundred and fifty and then last, then we did like twenty-five, then we did fifty, before we got to this year, so should there not be another seventy-five thousand in that?
Yes, but I don't put those until the end of the year.
Oh, because we just opened the fund, is that why?
No, well, this is, this is a bank account. This isn't the general ledger.
Yeah, you have to, it it's a very different, if you look at-
These are the actual bank accounts where the money's settled.
So even, so even more so, because the first year was what, three years ago, four years ago? And then and then a couple of years ago, it was painful and we could only do twenty-five? And then last fiscal year, we did fifty, so that would be seventy-five, which is separate from what we voted this year. So that's why I'm questioning, where would the other?
The money hasn't been moved to that account yet and I wait till the end of the year to do that, only because if something were to change for the district financially, I would wait to do that. But then at that point, the treasurer would move the money.
But this, this is FY FY seventeen, FY sixteen is what I'm talking about.
Right.
Right.
Oh, yes.
So there should have been, I I know what you're saying, so basically you're saying you haven't put in this year's allocation?
Right, I have that.
But what about the in four? The in four then?
So you know what Lynn, it's the the nine sixty-six. No, but so, whoa, nine, nine, yeah, something's not, I'm not getting something.
You might, you might wanna go back and take a look at it and just, well, and I'm thinking that you might want, because I mean, I wouldn't know what the-
I do.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say anything.
And I don't, so historically, you might wanna go back and say, yeah.
Well, we can meet offline about it.
Okay.
And just take a quick peek.
Silly question, I think we have a home town date, what do we have in home town date?
Um, those are funds from the school lunch program.
Oh. Mike, you had a question?
Just another que- question about the the Unibank. Is the 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 cash that's in there right now, is that a staging for future um disbursement or is that where it stays?
Basically, um, the Unibank General Operating Bank Account is where we um, we find, we put the money in those accounts for the payroll and for the, you know, what accounts payable. And and we would transfer from MMDT. MMDT is the Massachusetts Municipal Depository. That's basically all the money from the state goes into that fund, so. Clinton Savings is a a local bank. Um, we have actually um separate ones for student activities.
Yep.
And Fidelity is an investment account. For some of our funds. Anybody else have any questions?
Questions anymore?
Do we have to use our investment accounts?
Do we use our investment accounts?
You mean, do we move money around?
What do you mean, I don't understand, oh, do we invest?
Well, yeah, Fidelity is our, is our investment account. And I'm like, okay, so we can invest in it more. Do we use it?
I can't answer that question.
Well, but it's, you deposit the money in an account that has the highest yield. Um, the other accounts, there's a lot of movement in them. This one, um, I'm, I don't know why she doesn't move more. I don't, I don't know what the explanation is right now as to why she hasn't moved anything in one month, but she may periodically look at the rates and see if she should move money from one account to the other to prefer a higher yield.
So how about if we do this? Um, I appreciate, one second, um, I'll take it in a second. Um, why don't we ask Vicki to come in? And we can ask some detailed questions, kinda dig down under the covers and that way you don't have to answer for her. It might be easier that way. And then Steve, you had a question?
No, we're gonna do that, I don't have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll try to get this on for the next, yes, Susan?
This was not one of the recommended reports.
It was not?
From budget award, it is, this comes from the-
This was recommended by the auditor.
Oh, from the threads about it, so maybe let's add it, let's make sure we add it because we should be getting this anyway. And I remember him saying that, you should have the report from the treasurer.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And next, I just wanna give you some um, some updates and considerations for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen.
Okay.
So um, some year-end closing considerations that are coming up. Um, we have certified E and D.
Oh.
At one million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. That would be the next.
Wow. Higher than you thought?
How did you get E and D for this year?
Yep. You did, sorry. I knew you were gonna say E.
As a margin, I thought the projection is well below that. I thought that the projection was around.
One point three.
One point three.
Was that the projection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was the usage, okay, okay.
The preliminary, preliminary audit work will be July sixteenth and eighteen through the eighteenth. Um, that would be for fiscal year eighteen, so we're gonna start commending, go through everything for fiscal year eighteen already. Um, we're watching for updated regional transportation numbers. I got an email today about an update of um, that the funds will pass through the Senate. And um, we're also preparing, preparing year-end budget adjustments for the next meeting. And uh, we're watching for the final numbers of school choice and charter school assessment. Um, and I also wanted to bring forward too, so that you have some time to think about this, some potential uses of any surplus. Uh, we have some um, prepayment of out-of-district tuition.
Which we typically always do.
We always do that. We have some um, additional OPEB funding, we may use some of that additional money for.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
The out-of-district tuition can, just for everyone's knowledge, is the out-of-district tuition choice charter or is it sped?
Sped.
Sped, okay, so people need to know that that's what that references, okay.
And it's one of the things by statute that we can do.
Yep, so, yep.
Turf and track stabilization funding, yes, we've already decided that we were going to put the initial fourteen thousand and change in there. Uh, but um, if if we have some money, we might want to put some more in there as well. You might wanna think about updating the fleet.
Which we brought last year too.
Yeah, until the end of the year. And um, just considering maintaining a stable E and D.
Yep, we would be looking for your recommendation on that. Um, this presentation that you have, can you make sure that gets in the packet?
Absolutely.
Thanks, thanks. Oh, it is, oh, I didn't see it, must have gone in recently.
It it, yeah, I needed to see, it had not paid twice.
All right, Kathy then, Mike.
Um, in the budget, I think that we were going to use money from E and D, eight hundred thousand dollars for offset in the budget, is that correct? Does that come off of this one point three million or is it different money?
It's different. It's it's part of um, it's part of E and D, but not necessarily as you would bank. So we have funds already promised for fiscal year nineteen.
Right.
So this is what's in excess of that.
In excess of that.
So the eight hundred thousand is exclusive of the one point three. That's what we have right now is one point three going into FY nineteen.
Cause I thought the amount was much, hadn't been certified, but lower than that, that was gonna leave us with either six hundred thousand dollars or or eight hundred thousand dollars in E and D.
No.
No, I, okay, no, I just needed the clarification because I know that, I think the amount in the budget was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Questions? Mike, sorry, Mike.
That's okay, um, we've got one point three in um, E and D right now and it says potentially shifting surplus into the E and D. What's sort of the range of a comfortable E and D historically?
Well, um, by statute, anything above five percent of the following year's budget would have to be returned to the communities. So that is on on limits, so it's over two million dollars. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the number is, but it's like two point two million. Would have, anything above that would have to be returned to the member communities.
This is, it's a great question, Mike, because we actually have a lot of that kinda discussion around our budget award uh, subcommittee table. Like what is that magic number, what is the comfortable number? You know, and I think that one of the concerns we had was we don't want that number to go too low because we need, we need that cushion because as I say, you don't know from year to year when you're gonna have a year where all of a sudden not enough revenue comes into the state and all of a sudden you come back with these numbers, you say, oh my gosh, am I ever gonna make this budget work? So you really wanna keep that as a sol, I mean, for all kinds of reasons, bonding reasons, all kinds of reasons why, right? So, try to keep it solid.
Good questions, anybody else?
So I also have some considerations for two thousand nineteen. Um, the Leaching Field will be, uh, the engineering will be completed in the summer of two thousand eighteen.
That means we have to pay for the work to get done.
Right.
We're gonna have to start to think about, I think we're just being proactive right now.
So do we know what a-
These considerations.
Do we know what a range is for the actual work?
I think it's above three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
So we need to, that's like a priority one, we have no choice.
And then um, we have to explore the funding. What are we going to do?
For the field.
For the, for the Leaching Field edit, that would be, we could be bonding, which means we'd have to start looking into that in the fall of two thousand eighteen. Awesome, short-term borrowing. Um, and versus appropriating.
The full amount from the budget.
We'll look at it, see what it comes back at, you know, and make a decision from there.
Okay.
And also, um, at some point in in the late fall, we're gonna start the procurement of a vendor for the actual construction project.
So whatever you need for um, decisions from us, as far as your, when you need it, if you could just back it out and give us a couple of meetings to have discussions, you know, two meetings, then we'll make, that make, that will give us enough time to kind of debate a few things and get you what you need in timely manner so that you're not gonna be able-
I can give you free calendar.
Perfect, put it on the calendar, really great, thank you, I love it. See how many people made fun of me about the calendar?
I didn't make fun of you.
You all did.
I think it was actually originally my idea, but you take that.
Okay. Stay with that. Thanks, Pat.
Yes, I think you're right.
It's a good thing you had my children for me too. Okay, so I'm gonna make a recommendation if the school committee would allow it. Um, I'd love to, because we've got guests here and I don't want them to have to wait for us to sit through an executive session. If it's okay with you folks, I'd like to um, take the emergency response task force, cause I think that's who our guests are here, what they're here for. Um, is everybody okay with that? Bye, Espo.
Bye.
Did anybody have an objection? Nope, okay. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, so I'm gonna ask Lisa and Chief uh, to to come on. And I'm sure that earlier to tonight, when you were talking with the round tables, safety key continues to come up, you know, and we've done so much work in this area and Chief Nelson's just been amazing to work with. And I think the fact that Lisa has done his work in Lowell before, it's just making it easier on all of us because she's got the experience, she's got the seasoning, she's got the the eye for the attention to detail, which we desperately needed. Um, I think we've done just a lot, a lot of work in this area the last, well, probably four or five months and we're feeling really good about it. I know the high school, for example, is about, it's on the cusp of doing its dry run. I think on the nineteenth is what it's looking at. I was seeing the emails floating today, so it looks like it's probably gonna be the nineteenth. And that's, that's a big deal because it means we have to shut down part of the road, we have to, I mean, there's a lot that goes into these dry runs. So um, some of the other buildings have done it, Florence Sawyer, for example, has already done theirs, you know, some of the other buildings have done it. But of course, the high school is really our biggest, biggest nut to crack here, so I think we're really looking forward to that. We've done a lot of work with rally sites, with reunification, we've done, we've reached out to our bus companies. We've done a lot of things um, in a lot of areas that needed to be done, so I feel really, really positive about where we're at. I'm sure you're gonna talk about Alice training. Um, I wanna be clear again about Alice, uh, just for the sake, you know, like some, I know Stevie and I talked about this earlier today and we are not doing Alice with fidelity, so I don't ever want think, want people out there to think that that's what we're doing, we're not. But we are moving more towards the Alice model than not. So it's still a bit of a hybrid in terms of what works for Nishoba and Alice, so it's not Alice completely. However, there are a lot of components of Alice that we're going to use. Um, some of our administrators have already received some basic training, we're gonna, we're looking at doing that, you're probably gonna report that out tonight too, of where we're heading with that as well. So it's been a real collaborative approach and I know that Lisa, you've reached out with all of the chiefs, not just Chief Nelson. Uh, so why don't you take it from here and we'll, we'll leave it to the two of you.
Well, thank you and welcome to the two members. Um, so the emergency response task force has been working um, very closely with each individual school safety committee teams as well. So at the district level, we meet um, with um, most of the police chiefs if they can attend or some, some law enforcement attends the meeting from each town. So Lake Kesastol and Bolton, as well as um, Fire. Um, a safety committee member from each school attends that meeting as well. So the communication between the school and then what we're doing as a whole, as a district, is fluid, goes back and forth. And that's really um, strong now. We didn't have that connection before, so the emergency district response task force was working on certain things and it wasn't always communicated effectively with um, each safety committee within each building and it clearly is now. Um, and it's working very well. Um, so we have since January done quite a bit. We did, I did a quick introduction, not a training, um, Alice to the administrative team back in January to get them introduced to what that form would look like and what type of training that would look like. Um, from there, we looked at, um, we are trying a Crisis Go app right now at Florence Sawyer. That was one of the things that came out of the dis- the district level that wanted to try that. What that looks like is it's an alert system. We have an alert system that's current now within our schools, which is our messenger, school messenger, um, which is effective, it really is. But there's all these apps that come with because of what we're seeing in the nation now with school shootings and things like that. So there's hundreds of them, they're, they're popping up everywhere. Uh, and we had a free trial, so we figured, let's just try that. Um, it's still in the infancy stages of that trial. Um, there's some components of it we like, but Caitlin from uh, the vice principal at Florence Sawyer said that we are not able to trial the entire Crisis Go app because it's a trial, they're not giving us access to all of it. We really don't get a true feeling of it so far.
What a shame.
It is, so she is reaching out to the vendor that um, allowed us to do the free trial and to see if we can get through those bugs. So we don't wanna say no yet.
Well, forget about it.
Yeah.
There's hundreds of them, you said.
Exactly, we, it's fair enough, we had VisSafe come in um, just last week, which is another one of those um, alert or panic type things that um, parents, students and staff can utilize. What we've liked about this is Rob from Facilities also attended and um, it's kind of a dual purpose. So um, the Crisis Go, we felt like you can only use it for one little specific thing, if there was an emergency and how often would people remember how to use it or panics and stuff. With the VisSafe, it would allow you to take pictures of something. Where the this safe would allow you to take pictures of something and it's real time. You can send it immediately, like I have a water leak there and send it to facilities. So there's some other options to it. It was, it does come with a costly price and we're negotiating now just to see if we can get a free trial of that as well. What I, what the suggestion we're gonna bring into the emergency task force and my suggestion would be that Florence Sawyer trial that as well since they did the first one rather than doing different schools and everybody saying we love both of them, to look at that. So that's some of the things that we're doing. In March, we had the town discussions with students at the high school, which went very well with representation from legislature and also Chief Nelson was there. We did a safety summit because we had rally points, which is if we had to evacuate a building for whatever type of emergency, whether it be a bomb threat, a gas leak, something that just wasn't right in the school, that we needed to leave the school. Every school had a great plan of where that rally point would be, but that detailed part of missing of well, what do we do when we get there was somewhat missing. So we really did a safety summit to really hone in on that plan with law enforcement in each town and we held it at the high school. It was really productive. It did take us a couple of hours. I think a lot of staff thought it was gonna be easy, we're just gonna do this, this and this, but having the bird's eye of what we wanted, that tactical eyes to see, which is why we entered them. It gave us a whole different perspective of what that looks like as far as a plan. So we have solid, great plans in each school now where we would evacuate and what it looks like once we get there. Saying that, as superintendent stated that we did evacuations with staff only. We're not doing students because we wanted staff to be comfortable, to know where they're going with their students before they actually have students. So they understood because some of those rally points, staff members have not been to that other building. So to say, yeah, we're gonna go over to Hale School and we're gonna go to the auditorium, we never stepped into Hale, you don't know where the auditorium is. And we didn't want that learning curve to be done when they had students with them, keep their anxiety down alone with students. So that was part of our goal for the end of this year. The high school will be evacuating with their staff on June nineteenth. Again, all the evacuations have been done with law enforcement birds out of view to make sure that we're not missing anything and and staff members have their voice and saying and come up with new, a different set of eyes for that. We're also looking at our reunification sites. Reunification site is a site for if the rally point, we needed to reunify students with their parents or guardians offsite based on the nature of the threat in the area. Again, if it was a bomb threat and we and we had to close down the roads, we can't have parents coming to get their students. We need to get the students with the parents. So all the reunification sites have been identified as well. They've all approved by all three police chiefs and all three fire chiefs in all three towns. We wanted to make sure that they approved those and then brought to Superintendent Clancy to to make sure that everybody was on board and comfortable with those sites. The reunification site, how the plan looks there is in the workings now. So that's going to go into next academic year of how we're gonna make that look because that's a different type of plan than the rally points of how we reunify. We've already discussed, started discussing it, but we are looking at, we're finalizing a brochure that can go to parents so they understand where the reunification site would be for their students in the case of emergency via school messenger because we don't want parents coming to the rally point, so we don't share that. And we're also looking at a letter that would be sent out beginning of the year. That's still, we're hoping to finalize that at June's meeting, so then we can send it off to the superintendent for her approval.
So so that's really important stuff, those reunification points and I'm hoping that that can get done like really, really quickly. And then would that be like prominent on the homepage of every school's website?
That's that's the goal, is that they would have that rather than just maybe the brochure. We're gonna present the brochure to the superintendent so she'll see what it looks like or it just goes on the website of each school.
Like a really obvious and not not a lot of, I have to click and read a big thing. Who cares? Don't put the promo in it, just put the dang reunification.
Right, and we're doing each school in the brochure, so it's not gonna be school specific. It's in the Shova district by unusual school districts. So each school knows where the reunification site because we have students that are in different schools.
And the process itself, I mean, that's the other, when we talk about attention to detail, that's the other piece that we're working on right now is what is the specific process? And that as well will have to be related to parents in September as well. So these are, again, these are kind of details, are kind of holes that we found, you know, when we sat down and really looked at the overarching plan for the district.
I have another question before I let you go. Sorry.
Susan does too.
When will, sorry, Susan, you wanna go ahead?
No. I mean, I will after you.
Oh, okay. When will the evacuations be done with students? And the reason I ask that question is because I've heard from parents that they're frustrated that their students have said they haven't had the evacuation. Can you share that?
Yes. So again, the reasoning for doing it with staff first is so they're comfortable with the students and and staff were not comfortable with the evacuation as well because they haven't done it. And that was our goal to make sure by the end of this year that our staff was comfortable with that evacuation. And once we do the evacuation, more things may come up, more ideas from from staff members than just the safety committee and emergency response task force along with law enforcement. We're hoping, we mapped out today at one of the safety meetings at the high school that looking at early October, if not the end of September. So we're looking at at the beginning of of next year.
Beginning, the beginning, 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 beginning.
Well, what we're looking at is doing, there's an online learning that I had the principals looked at for the Alice program. Again, saying that we may not take every component of that Alice program to heart when we're when we're training, but the majority gives you a whole overview of what it is, but we can choose what components we're going to actually reinforce with students. We wanna do that in the first few days of PD of school, so staff are trained. Then we, the second part of that training is they do the online, they take a quick test at the end, so it shows that they're confident, they understood the material. The whole district can do it at the same time and me as the administrator of that program can view who's completing it and who hasn't. So we have a log, so we know that every, including substitute teachers, et cetera, so everybody's gonna get access to that. And then the second half is with certified instructors, which we have quite a few in the district. Casey's a certified instructor. We have some in Lancaster and then on myself as well as a certified instructor. Then we do scenarios so they understand what it looks like and we can help them within their classroom to answer all those questions when we have to do drills. We're hoping to do that and then three parent nights, three separate ones in each town. So parents need to understand what that looks like before we teach their their children. We really wanna make sure that the parents understand what it looks like, what the model looks like and what we're gonna be teaching them. So we're gonna give those those opportunities right away, right, right after the staff has been trained and we're gonna set that, those three days up at the next emergency response task force that's on the agenda for us to do that. And then we roll out with students. And that first student evacuation is gonna be a calm, organized, this is where we're going in case of emergency. It's not gonna be that drill like a fire drill because we've done it a hundred times over the past four, five. You know, we do enough of them, but it comes second nature for students to do that. We hopefully event, eventually that's what this will do as well. But we're doing nice, soft evacuation, ease, this is where we're gonna go.
Well, that's low anxiety too, right?
Correct. And we also have to consider our special needs population. So we need to meet with with that group prior to doing this with students as well. We really wanna be sensitive to the sensory issues of students that have those anxieties.
What we're looking at doing is front loading all of our drills in September next year. And as I said to one of the tables today, you know, the whole, the whole notion, I think I've said this around this table too, the old notion was during the warm months, we'll do the fire drills and during the winter months, we'll do the lockdown. We're really past that stage in this era right now. So it's my goal to to front load all of those drills right up front. I wanna just speak to the trainings that we're talking about would be our teachers' first days back. So that that's gonna be a definite focus. So we've been sitting trying to map out those first two days and how we can make all of this work because, you know, everything from having six hundred people go online at the same time to, you know, how do we, how do we stagger the drills the next day? What does that look like? And there's a lot of detail that has to go into those drills that, again, I'm not gonna put out on air right now, but there's a lot of behind the scenes work to make sure that we do it the right way.
Okay, Susan, you got a question?
I wondered about the concerns. I know it's not a perfect system, right? And and that there's a lot of unpredictability, but if there are any concerns about putting out the information for the reunification sites so that others can see it, I'm guessing there'll be a heavy law enforcement presence, but it, you know, it'd be terrible to think that it was a two-phase sort of thing where, you know, they're at the school and they know where the reunification is.
That's gonna be a tough one to keep secret from everybody.
Right.
Because we want people to know where to go.
Yeah.
Because, I'll just talk about Nishoba because in Nishoba, we could have kids all over the place, Mark's right, green. They'd be in the woods for days.
Right.
It would be tough to find. So we gotta give them somewhere to go and unfortunately, that's another scenario we have to look at is like this last shooting. He he had booby traps, he had things and he, you know, did his research and he knew what to target. We always, in a bomb call, if the bomb goes off, there may be a secondary device somewhere else getting the first responders that come in. You have to worry about when the kids bail out of the school, is there a second person? So there's all kinds of things you have to think of. And I think it's it's more get them away, get them to where the law enforcement can can take control and secure them in a perimeter and then have an interior and an exterior.
And so sort of to kind of go with that, the the apps, I know a lot of districts are are struggling with that too. Like who has access to the apps and how do they, how do they, you know, like if it's open to more visibility than 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 just families?
Right, and I think that's why we're we're trialing some of those apps now to see if it works or if it doesn't. Not a lot of, you know, I know some school districts that have moved towards some of those apps. Mostly you're gonna see that in your university's that are utilizing them to let stadium users use this. So if you, when you show up to an event, you can get on this safe one. So if you, you know, see something, say something is the concept of that. And I think that's why we're trialing it right now. I'm not quite sure it's gonna be a fit for us, but that's something we wanted to at least consider because it was brought up at the emergency task force and and schools are looking, looking towards that.
Yeah. So have you, has there, have there been, and maybe you haven't had these discussions, any reservation for faculty to use their personal devices with any of this?
So, yeah, for the apps.
Yeah, so they've been a little leery of.
And the ones that have, most, all of the apps that we tried, the two, the this safe that we will be trying hopefully in September and the crisis co also has a component that goes onto your PC or laptop. So if, for those that don't wanna use their personal device, they still had access to it, just in a different form. So they both have that option.
The other thing I wanna mention, I know Chi just came in, Sushi, who is head of our IT department. He's worked very closely with Devens and with the IT of the police department and we've been able to tie in some of our infrastructures to help out so that we've got instant, the police will be able in an emergency to have instant access to look into any building right throughout the district. The other thing that we've taken care of too is right now all police have all access to all of our buildings. So if something happened in Lancaster and Stoke Police were to go, Stoke can get into, our Stoke Police force can get into that. The other thing that we're working on too is getting access, I'm not sure how far along we are, but getting all the maps to the police department. That's an area that we're also working on, like the blueprints of all of our buildings and such because they have not had them. And so that's another area that we're working on right now too. So I feel so good about the work that has been done in this area. It has, we've climbed mountains.
Lisa's done a great job. She's done, that lead, the entire committee, everybody's done a great, great job. The support that we've gotten from the school committee and the principals, all the law enforcement from all the other towns, the fire chiefs, everything's been going great. So I I think we're going in the right direction. I think with the Alice program gives us another tool, not a tool belt, it's like me carrying around my super belt here. I got something that I might be able to use someday, but it's it's just gonna help the kids or the the staff, the teachers, anything to to help get out of a situation. And I will reiterate the say something, if you see something, say something. That's always the big thing. Sometimes we're the last to know and if we're more reactive, you call us, we respond. I'd rather be proactive and jump on something fast before it gets to the point that it escalates to something bad.
So to your point, and Superintendent Clancy and I talked about this earlier about when can we bring families in? When can we get in front of parents? And that's, Lisa, that was one of the things I think that you were talking about. That see something, say something culture needs to permeate the district because I think if parent, if we can get to parents, if you can get to parents, and you and I've talked about this in years past, it's like, do we have issues with X, Y and Z at the high school? And you're like, no, no one's talking about it, so we don't know that we have issues at the high school, right? Unless somebody brings it to you. But right now, like this is the perfect opportunity to push that culture to the parent level, to the community level, the broader community. Allow the community members to come in and hear what's going on because there's a lot of questions. People wanna know what's going on. You're doing some great work, but we all, I really think that that message of it's a community, safety is a community issue. It's not a high school issue, it's not an elementary school issue, it's not a school committee issue, it's a community issue. So what you're talking about needs to become the culture and we need to get in front of the community with it.
If you follow Facebook, Clinton PD, Clinton High School, the elementary school just had a young child bring in bullets to show and tell. And another high school student just got arrested today for some sort of threat, some sort of incident at the school which turned into a gun seizure at his house with a search warrant. You know, things are out there. So if if people tell us things, if we are able to look into it and we and we find credible information, then we can do something.
Mike?
Just, this is for both Lisa and for Chief Nelson. It sounds like we're moving towards the Alice model and we're still talking about evacuations. Are we moving away from the lockdown model? And if we're not, are we still, is that something that we're doing?
I think it's integrated into every year.
It's integrated in Alice, but the lockdowns are not, we're we're hoping to train to not do the traditional lockdown that we've known in the past of hiding in the corner, that we have options, that if we're going to lockdown, we should be barricading at the same time. Anything that you can slow down a process, taking that, regular lockdowns still continue. If there was a robbery at the pizza place across the street and they wanted, there was assailant running around, you'd still put the school in lockdown, but education can still continue. So there's different types of enhanced lockdown and regular lockdown, but the Alice model based on other emergencies would give you options of how that lockdown looks. Does that, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, it does. And I would just, I just add, our school did a brief Alice training a couple of weeks ago. It was actually really difficult for some teachers to go through like the motions of barricading and so I would just say that's something to keep in mind because, you know, teachers asked directly, we don't wanna participate, this is just too much.
Right. What we do before that second half, they'll they'll see it online. I'm not sure if the school community was able to view the online version, which answers a lot of those questions. What we always do is I, which I will for all the school districts, we need to roll out that second half and and show how to barricade to answer those questions because there's other staff members that are, they're ready to go, they're already doing it. For those ones that are having difficulty, we do a different type of training with them. So we're not forcing that if, when we're not ready, but also know that there's tools there for them to make some decisions and how we can help process with that. And a lot of times we'll have them follow one of the instructors during those scenarios so they get a, they'll be able to view it rather than be a participant in it, so to speak, and and answer those questions. And then we work one on one with those staff members that are having difficulty.
I think to your point though, Mike, we were well aware of that even before it happened.
Yes.
So that's actually what I was alluding to earlier. I just didn't say that's what it is, but your point is well taken because you're absolutely right. And I think I I just wanna stress too, Alice is, it's not something, it's not a one thing show. I mean, the whole point of Alice is that you've got options available and here are some concrete, good, solid options for you to consider. Going back to the tool belt, that's, I think that's exactly how we talk about it. This is just another tool, the tool belt.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please let us know with any of these efforts if you need more from us.
Well, we always need more.
Well, write it down and send it in, honey, because just seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna slot that executive session in right now if we could, if everybody's okay with that.
I don't think it'll be long.
I'm hoping not. So if you would do the dubious honors, we need to do this by roll call vote. roll call vote. Kathy, I'll let you make the motion.
I need that we adjourn the bargaining meeting and enter into executive session pursuant to NGO Chapter 30A, 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining between the C, the new committee may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares and the meeting to include Superintendent Clenchey and the HR Director Emily Stoker, and we will return to open session.
Awesome. We have a second.
Second.
Steve, thank you. Okay, roll call. Susan?
Yeah.
Elaine, yes. Steve, yes. Lorraine, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Elaine, and Mike, yes. Okay, we're back again. Thank you so much. Now, we're moving into the new business portion of our agenda. We do, you have the card, or did Lynn take it?
She took it.
Okay, so can I have the card, please? We, the school committee just came out of executive session and we have ratified our Unit C contract for our support staff. Unit A is our teachers' contract, Unit C is for custodians, facilities folks, administrative support folks. And we will make that document available online. Do you have any idea when that would be available?
We can put, we can make the changes and put it on as is, but then it will be reformatted.
It's gonna, still has to go through Mike first for some reforming.
Well, there's the reformatting for the uniform issue, but it will be the essence of it. And there'll be no substantive changes after that, so all this to say.
So, can we water market that maybe, so people can at least see it? And that way, maybe it's draft on there or pending, well, it was adopted.
It won't be draft, it will be fine. It'll just be replaced by a document with the same words, but in a different order.
Oh, oh, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I just wanna make sure people can look at it if they, they're interested in it. So, the highlights of our Unit C contract, the school committee just voted in executive session to adopt it unanimously, but we do need to take a vote in public session as well. So, just the highlights are that this was a very quick, thorough, but quick negotiation. The contract began with FY seventeen, so that was June of seventeen, but because we did the Unit A contract first and that took a little bit longer, this contract will go to June 30th, 2020. The increases each year are two percent, two percent, two percent. So, two percent for each of the three years of the contract. The only other significant increase was professional, was it professional development?
Tuition reimbursement.
Tuition reimbursement. So, we increased tuition reimbursement for those who qualified to, from seventy-five hundred dollars in the first year to ten thousand, and then the ten thousand dollars for each subsequent year. So, that ten thousand dollars is shared by the entire Unit C population. And for those who qualify, the reimbursement money has to, has got to go to coursework that has something to do with their current job or in their field, and it's capped at a thousand dollars per person to make it equitable for more than one or two people to take courses. So, given that, want to thank the Neshova Regional Education Association for both Unit A with the teachers and Unit C. This was the first time that the district used counsel in order to do the negotiation, so it took a little bit longer. It was a very big learning experience for all of us. I think it was extremely positive. And the approach that our staff took with the school district, the school committee and the administration was extremely collaborative. So, we thank you very much. And at this point, if someone would like to make the motion, Kathy?
I move to approve and ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Neshova Regional School District Committee and the Neshova Regional Education Association Unit C as presented, including amendments, and authorize the superintendent to take any action for implementation.
Thank you. And a second, please?
Second.
Steve, got it. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all. Six, six that passes. Okay. Excuse me. Now, we're gonna move into the next item of business, which is the business manager appointment. I'm turning it over to Superintendent Clenchey.
Thank you. And I ask Pat Maroney to just come forward to the table, please, for both the next, this particular item and the next one. The first one is, Pat has been in the role for the last two years as the interim business manager. I think that we feel very comfortable in removing that word interim from her role right now. And I'm putting forward tonight the fact that I would like to remove the word interim and call her officially our business manager from here on in. So, that is my recommendation this evening.
Thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Any comments?
Just.
Yes.
Just to thank Pat for helping, being the, you know, giving us a level of consistency over the last three years. And I know you put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it, and I just appreciate all the work you've done and all the help you've given us. So, thank you.
So, with that, you have my heartiest support. Pat was the contact person, whether she wanted to be or not, through the forensic audit effort. And it was heavy lifting, a lot of putting best practices in place, a lot of undoings processes and putting in new processes, learning processes that were in place that you may not have been involved in. And we now have a very clean process, very transparent and open. I think the last budget cycle really helped explain that. And I appreciate the fact that you're always willing to answer questions because you know we always have them. So, with that, if it requires a vote?
I would do a vote ask.
Would someone like to make a motion?
A move that we remove the word interim from the business manager's position and take up the superintendent's recommendation that we appoint Pat Maroney as the business manager.
And a second, thank you, Elaine. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's wonderful. I wanna speak just for a minute too. I think, Pat, your work has been just outstanding and especially through the forensic audit and all that we've been through in the last two years. You've just been an amazing partner to work with and I'm just so appreciative. So, thank you for all your work. The next one is, and I think, Pat, you can probably explain it as easily as I can, but we haven't had an official procurement officer appointed for the district. And she should be appointed as that procurement officer too. And if you think about it, just simplistically, she is the one that gathers all the work, she takes in all the information for contracts, she does, I mean, that is her job. So, we really do need to have her appointed this evening as the procurement officer for the school district.
So, you need someone to move to appoint Pat Maroney as the Neshova Regional School District procurement officer. Somebody wanna put that one?
Yes, please.
So, in a second. Steve, all those in favor? It's unanimous again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Thanks for everything. Sure, you can stay up here and help us out as we go into the next piece. And Chi, we'd ask that you come to the table, please.
Hello.
Hi, Chi. Chi, Mike Horash is our new school committee rep from Bolton.
Hi, dear.
And Elaine C. Filippo is our new school committee rep from Stowe. And you know the rest of the other characters off the table.
Thank you. So, Sushi is our director of IT for the school district. He does an amazing job with us. He and his team work very, very hard. They are one of the major reasons why our MCAS goes so smoothly as we've transitioned over to the CBA from paper and pencil. We're not a hundred percent CBA, but we're getting closer. Probably we'll be able to be that next year is what our hope is. When we talked about this before, coming and presenting tonight, I think, Alita, I think I have one slide to put up there, maybe two, if you can take a quick peek at it, that would be interesting. You wanna grab it over there?
I think.
Oh, your slide.
Yeah. So, how we wanted to approach this evening for this particular component is you had asked us a couple of things. You wanted to talk quickly about how we view things through the technology lens for the district in terms of globally. And so, we're gonna talk very briefly about that. And then also, the whole notion of Chromebooks came up as well. And so, we wanted to address that as well this evening. When we look at IT through the lens of the school district, it's not a lot different than how we look at safety plans for the district. You know, what we focused on tonight was the processes, the plans, the facilities, the partnerships, and all that other kinda stuff. But, we put that over here. And Mike, when you started talking about teachers who could be affected by some of this, that's another whole piece of the work, is that social, emotional learning that goes for both our staff and our students. Well, so we take a look at that large picture. When we talk about safety, we talk about the things and we talk about the people. When we talk about IT, we have to also look through a large lens. And so, when we take a look at this kind of work that's up on the screen right now, we look at, under these key salient topics, school operation and business operation, technology management, teaching and learning, cybersecurity, and safety management. Because these are all components of the work that Chi and his team do every single day. I think sometimes people tend to think it comes back to that one-to-one or the Chromebook initiative or whatever, and it isn't. That's really a sliver of the work that's done in this area for IT. So, when we talk about, when we build the budget, when we're building our budget, for example, and the IT component of that, these are all the areas that we need to take a look at. We have to look at licenses, for example. You know, even food services moving to Mosaic last year, that was a huge shift, you know? Looking at using parts of Mosaic now with our extended date program. Never mind the whole MCAS component, there's just, it's really an enormous sphere that we look at when we look at IT. So, I'm not gonna go through all of these because I think that, you know, you're very familiar with all of this. But, I think we just wanted to put it down because I don't think we've ever articulated exactly the type of work that IT does. So, that was one of the points for doing that. So, there's that piece. When we talk about, if you can go to the next slide, Alita, please.
There's the next slide.
Sorry.
She asked me to remove it.
Yeah, there's.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It just passed me.
Oh, not a problem. When we talk about maintenance plan for the district as a component to this work, because it's kind of a bit of an offshoot, we look at, Chi has everything laid out. We monitor every single device that we've got. We put a lifespan on it that is fair and reasonable, and we take a look and say, okay, when do we think we might have to replace this particular component? Over the course of time, and we had this discussion the other day, for example, I remember early in my teaching being so excited about getting a lab, a computer lab. Well, that's kind of antiquated now, we don't really talk about that. So, the notion that we would still be building those kinds of costs into a budget is ridiculous. So, you know, when we take a look at the maintenance and the long-term plan for IT, you're not seeing as many purchases of PC units or whatever it is. You'll see some laptops, you'll see the Chromebooks in there. So, there's quite an extensive plan.
Where is that? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry. Well, we looked at putting it in here and it was really just quite lengthy. And so, he tried to snapshot it. And maybe you could just kind of go through ever so briefly. I'm not sure if we could still capture that, to put that up, Alita, or not? No? Okay.
I can, I can just talk.
You could just talk it through then quickly?
So, basically, we list here like a different kind of equipment we have, like the network equipment, the smartphone, the projector, the laptop, desktop, Chromebook, iPad, and also even the copiers, like everything we list here. And this is kind of a formula like, by can, you know, it had detail with, you know, each location in the school, what classroom, which year was purchased, roughly how much. So, everything is here was linked, dynamic link to the real purchase. From here, we build like a ten-years replacement plan. Then in the middle here, like, we can decide, you know, how many years is a reasonable recycle, like, you know, teacher laptop, we replace every five years, like, you know, smartphone probably eight, seven years. Based on that, we can know, we have like a ten-year production, like, you know, how much the hardware will cost. And then like, you know, Superintendent mentioned, this, when we build the budget, you guys, you guys have this possibility. So, when we build the budget, there's two things we look. One is, you know, the age of the machine. The second part is, we actually talk to the school administrator and we talk to the teacher. We find out exactly what is needed, what's their priority. It's not like, you know, we don't really do like things purely based on age. Because, you know, some stuff, you know, even if it's up to the, based on age, it probably needs to be replaced, but it's not needed anymore. Like, you know, the lab, right now the direction is, you know, because we deployed quite a bit of Chromebooks, especially to middle school level. So, middle school and lower school, you know, when we're talking to the principal, the local like technology leaders, they are not really looking to replace the lab anymore. So, that is the direction we're taking. So, we shift that cost from the lab to the mobile device. And by doing that, it's not like just, you know, few hours, but it's, we're actually talking to the school level people. We're talking to the local admin, to the teacher, and also local, like, school local technology leaders. So, those are the kind of a team effort, you know? We get feedback from all the stakeholders, and then we make a kind of a, we think the best direction of proposal, you know, will be the budget.
And this is part of a much larger scope, you know, when you take a look at some of the work that you, that you've done to prep this. We're happy to bring all of that in if you'd like to see that at some point in time. Tonight, we were just looking at that snapshot view.
Yeah.
Because we knew that you wanted to talk about that, and we knew that you wanted to hear about the Chromebook repairs. And so, I'm just gonna shift to Chromebook repairs right now as well. So, when, when the Chromebooks are damaged, or there's something wrong or what have you, your department does what they can to fix what they can in-house. If we can't fix it in-house, then it does get shipped off for repairs. And then, some, in some cases, it's decided that it is just broken beyond, we can't fix this anymore. We do have loners at every school so that a student wouldn't be without a Chromebook. And so, if something like that does happen, there are loners that we can put into place. We have introduced a process in terms of dealing with those students, say, for example, who need to make some sort of renumeration for something that has been willfully damaged. But, we see that in a very different category than your regular ongoing maintenance. So, in a snapshot, that's kind of, I guess, a quick overview of how we're dealing with that.
But I think we need to talk about that. So, so with the Chromebook, is there a policy in place right now for how we handle?
Willful damage?
Yeah, I mean, utilization, damage, replacement. Because if there isn't, I think we need one.
Well, I think we have a process in place, quite frankly.
I mean, a policy.
Oh, a policy. No, I think it's more the practice. I don't think that we've got policy in the, Susan, would you know, we have, I don't think we have policy on this. We have the contract the parents sign off on at the beginning of the year, and we have a process to go through to invoice for willful damaged products. And that would come out of Pat's office versus Chi's office or the schools.
So, I guess that question is, and Susan, maybe this is something to ask Dorothy when you guys next meet, but we make a sizable investment in, you know, the Chromebooks and the things that the kids, the kids use, the things that we use. The investment is so big for that, and I'm wondering if other districts do have a policy on it, especially that willful damage component. I just think it might be something to think about.
Do we need to have a general idea of what percentage of them are willfully damaged or what kind of [inaudible]?
Yes, it's relatively, for willful damage, it's relatively small, to be honest with you. And we have like a list of, like fifteen, for example, right now. So, when you think of how many are across the school district, fifteen is not awfully high.
So, just a couple of questions. We talked a little bit about willful damage and then maybe sort of juxtapose that with vandalism, sort of anonymous vandalism. I don't know if that's becoming an issue where Chromebooks are being damaged, but whoever did it is unidentifiable. I mean, how? How, how does the school get reimbursed for the loss of property in that way? Do we have, do we have a policy around that? Because I heard that that's.
So I, I'll take that and then you can talk with.
I have a second question too, just to help, but, no, 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 you answer that one.
Okay, so we've had a lot of discussion around this because if you think about it, that Chromebook is almost like the new textbook, right? And I'm, I'm sure that you, you would think like this as a teacher too. So, you know, sometimes I, I give the example, like if, if my daughter was in the locker room and somebody sat down in the change room and had a bottle of water and spilled it, but they didn't see it because it was maybe under some clothing or whatever, and then you pick up and walk away. How do you, how do you track that? Like you, you almost can't, whether it's a Chromebook or textbook, right? And so we had, we've had these kinds of conversations around the table, like what do we go after and what do we not go after, right? And in some cases, there are some cases where the willful damage, you know exactly what's happening, you know exactly who it is, and that's something you go after. These one-offs are a little bit different and they're different than just the regular upkeep and, you know, that kind of thing that happens. So we see them as different buckets.
Yeah, so I mean, are there, are there mechanisms where the district can absorb those costs? I mean, you're saying that they're pretty rare, but.
Yeah.
There's five to 10 of them maybe a year, I mean, is there, Alita?
Well, we, and we've had that conversation as well and we feel that we should, that it would be part and parcel, no different than if you lost a textbook or two, what would you do? You would buy the next textbook because you need it for that class, right? And so that's where we landed on those one-offs at where, you know, and we've even, I mean, to show you how far our conversation has traveled, how much time do we want with our assistant principals looking into this when, quite frankly, there are far bigger issues that we need to be dealing with rather than, than this? I give the other example, like if you had a textbook and somebody had written a lot of graffiti in it, to the point that it wasn't usable anymore, like what, what do you do? Well, you can't clean it, you can't cleanse it, it's no longer usable, you know. But is it worth it for an assistant principal to spend a lot of time trying to track to who put the graffiti in that textbook? So I mean, I know that I'm drawing the analogies between the two, but that's kind of where we landed as we were thinking this all through.
So what happens when, and this was a question that came up today, so what happens when you have a student or students who repeatedly?
That's a different story, yeah.
My concern is that student doesn't have a text, a textbook, a Chromebook to take home, and so are they at a deficit?
Well, if, from, from our lens again, how many textbooks would they go through before you say, then you don't deserve a textbook? The same kind of.
But how do they learn though, how do they?
Well, it's, it's, you're right, I mean, it's really a, almost ethical question that you're trying to struggle. We've had these discussions, I mean, it is a struggle. But in all honesty, right at this point in time, we can name on less than one hand, repeat offenders. The other piece that goes along here that we feel is important is that there are times when it's clearly obvious that this is a discipline situation. And, you know, again, to show you how broad our discussions were in this area, we said, you know, for example, in some discipline situations, for those of you that are in education, it's one and done, depending on the situation, depending on how bad the situation is. You just, you know, you look at the situation, you look at what the child has done and said, this child does not belong in our schools anymore and so we're gonna expel this child. There are other times when it's just progressive discipline along the way. So we see the same approach with this, you know, there's times when it's gonna be necessary for progressive and there's other times when you say, you don't deserve this anymore. So, but it does, it does call on the ethical to the law.
Go ahead, I have another one, but go ahead.
So the, the Chromebooks are the property of the school and they are loaned to the students every year. Do they turn them in at the end of the school year?
Currently, no.
Why not?
Because the way we feel is, you know, it's a, it's a one-to-one device, save it to students all the time, we help them, you know, keep them learning. You know, if you suddenly like stop them, you know, for example, summer vacation, you take like, take them back for two months. In winter break, you take like a couple weeks, I think it's kind of a disrupt their learning pattern.
I think that the summer is different and, and I would, I wonder, I know that in some districts, they collect them and they are gone through by teams of the IT people to, to, to make sure that they're ready to start the school year, I, I think Christmas vacation is different. But I'm just wondering about that because when they're, when they have them at home in the summertime, unless they're in a special program or something, they're not required by the school to learn anything. And I guess I, I share the concern about them, you know, somebody having an accident with it. One thing kids like to do is pull out the keys and rearrange them to say things, some of which are inappropriate and can't be said on television, but this is some of the things that you see. And I think that I, you know, as you're talking, I mean, you sign for a textbook, you sign a receipt, it's your responsibility. You take care of it and, and if it doesn't show up at the end of the year, you pay for it.
Right.
And to me, that's analogous, it's ripped. You still need a new book or even if you send it out to be rebound, there's gotta be some kind of consequence or there's no reason to take good care of it.
But, but there is.
But, but what I'm saying is that if at least they were collected at the end of the school year and examined by the IT people and that we knew that they were, when a kid came back in September, that this was good to go, then everybody started with a clean slate. So I, it's just something that, that I, I asked about it when I was on the tech committee and you were in at the meeting, but somebody else said, well, it's just, we can't do it, it's, it's too much, there are too many. But, but I know that other districts do it and it's a way to ensure that machines that kids are given, when they come back, are, are ready to go and everybody started with a clean slate. You come back in September and God only knows what the keyboard says or what's missing.
If they lost it over vacation.
Or, you know, you have siblings, never would scenario there if they're gonna play with it or whatever. I'm just trying to think, it's, it's probably the school.
You turn your textbooks in at the end of the school year.
Exactly, exactly, so it's just, that's just a concern that I've had.
It's, it's an interesting suggestion, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the district that I work in, they do, they do term and at the end of the year, and it seems to work out. I wondered about, I did find a policy for student conduct, I'll explain that in a second, but I wondered if the acceptable use, do they, they must sign an acceptable use policy?
They do, that's exactly what I was saying, yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay, and, and is damage, or is that just for the content they access?
No, I think, you know.
Did you, did I miss it when I was searching?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, sorry, okay, no, nevermind that.
No, 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 I didn't explain it, no, in all fairness, I didn't explain that. I was just going back to Kathy's comment because you're right and, and what we're doing with the invoices, when we're sending the invoice to the parent, sending a copy of the signed contract as well.
Yes.
So the, the parent can see, oh, that's right, we did sign for this, we do all this money.
So, so the, the Chromebooks themselves are part of, like, using, it, it's not just about the, the technology they access or that they use, right? Like, it's, it's about how they use the Chromebooks as part of it.
Yes, it's like you said, you know, if it's damaged, lost, you know, it's very responsible to pay back to the district.
And then the policy that I found, it's in section J, which is not one of the ones that we, where we're finished reviewing it, but we haven't brought it to you.
Yep.
There's a policy Student Conduct JK and the recommendation of the policy subcommittee is going to be to replace our old policy with a mask policy. Because our policy, it, it basically just says that, that there are some things that they leave to the building, like the individual school buildings, so they don't have an overarching school committee policy for certain disciplinary things and that there are policies in place, like, in, in each of the buildings. But this does say that the purpose of the disciplinary action is to restore acceptable behavior. Students violating any of the policies will be subject to disciplinary action. So it seems like rather than, well, our old policy had a list of, of naughty behaviors.
Oh, but then by exclude, but then, then you're really exposed because, yeah.
So this is more general, it's broader and it gives each individual, you know, like the stakeholders in each of the buildings more of a, a say in, in.
Yeah, I don't wanna punish kids, but I do, I do, and I do wonder, I, I think I have to overwhelmingly support Kathy's notion that what are, and I, I guess I would wanna know, what are the disadvantages to collecting those Chromebooks at the end of the year? It sounds responsible to do that in order to clean them, make sure they're functional, make sure they all have their cords.
Are the students' names on the, that they're, so they get back the same, they get back the same one? And I don't think in terms of punishment as, as much I, I do about accountability. I think that's what we're talking about, accountability. I mean, the district is making a huge investment, there are a lot of people that disagree with the way that we're doing this and we've supported it and just, just so.
And these are not personal implements, these are not their personal home laptops. So I really do, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I think we should collect them, Mike.
Well, this goes back to my other question and then it kinda ties back into the summer thing. That sounds like it's a staffing issue, I mean, that's, that's a lot of work to collect and organize and sort of procure and kind of go through each one of them. And I'm wondering, in addition to that, everything in the district seems to be moving towards a digital culture, whether it's digital teaching or digital learning or the smart boards or projectors. And I wonder if we have a vision of how IT is going to evolve with that changing culture. I mean, do we have enough IT support staff to troubleshoot issues as they come up in the classroom? Or do we have enough IT support staff to sort of review these laptops if that's the way that we go? Or is the IT department sort of staying static?
I don't think, I don't think that question, honestly, I don't think the question could be answered right now.
Yeah, I think that that's a really big question. If I, if we were to collect 100% of those, like, I, I'm not sure that we have the staff available to collect 100% of these iPads back in. Like, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, can we just do the high school, can we just do, like, there's a piece of me, because to be honest with you, that's normally where our biggest concern lies, is at the high school. We really don't have concerns at the middle or that, that's what we're finding, willful damage or even a lot of broken stuff, to be honest with you. You know, it's, and it's.
But we're not, we're, I feel like we're kinda talking around issues and not really resolving things. So the summer thing is, I don't wanna put, I want someone to put the words on the table. The summer thing is no-go, go, and why?
I don't know that I'm prepared to say go or no-go because I need to go back and take a look at how many this really would entail us collecting.
But he's got 1,183 Chromebooks right now. And we know that a lot, that not all of those are in the hands of students, or are they?
Not, are we talking about the one-to-one of all the Chromebooks?
No, it says one-to-one is 294.
No, the one you, you look at there is only for the replacement cycle. Like, for example, once we buy a one-to-one, they kind of show up there.
Oh, that's for the purchase.
Yeah, it's much more than that.
Yeah, well, okay, so hold on one second, I still, all right, so there's that. Then, then you just brought up something about the high school. So next year, freshmen, sophomore, juniors at the high school will have Chromebooks.
Three.
Seniors, what are we doing with them?
So currently, like, high school has shared in cart-based Chromebooks, those will be deployed to the classroom.
So the seniors will be using the Chromebooks that are on the carts right now. So what's gonna happen if they need backups that they would typically take from the cart?
There's, there's enough as a spare. High school, like, the senior has, whatever the high school, the cart and classroom-based Chromebooks is more than the senior, than, yeah.
So we, what do you, so in essence, we've got the cart and then we've got extras that we use for loaners. To your point, I do wanna jump back to what you were saying, Mike, earlier. I, I have concerns already that our, that staff is already very thin.
Struck, yeah, I imagine.
You know, because.
Let you see part, you know, not only the staff, also just, this process, if you think how we're collecting and where it is, like physically, we don't even have space to put all those devices. You know, with the high school, with the summer deployment, there's no, physically no space to store those.
Now, this, he says, because every year we go through this kind of thing in the summer. So I think that's why you're, you're saying it, but in all honesty, Chi, like, there's, I, I'm sitting here thinking, I know what you're thinking, I'm thinking, where could we put these? Like, is there, is there someplace else we can put these in the district somewhere, like, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Put them on the cabinets in your new file room. Could you just stack those suckers right up?
They are empty shelves.
I mean, too, it's like, we could if we wanted to, but what I'm hearing is you don't want to.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that, I'm not saying that I don't want to. I would really like to go back and look at the logistics of what this would look like. Could we staff it appropriately? Could we, could we do this? And I'm sitting here tonight saying, I like the idea, so I don't wanna throw the idea out. I just need to know if we can physically do this.
Couple things. One of the, one of the reasons for collecting them over the summer and checking them so that on the first day of, of school, everybody's good to go. If on the first day of school, people come in with their, their Chromebooks and some aren't working or some have problems, how much time does it take to straighten that out? So that's one of my concerns. The other thing is, and I'm sorry to have to go here, but in Concord, they collect all the laptops and they have a team of three IT people dedicated and that's their job in the summertime. They keep them at the schools, they go from school to school, I mean, they're, they're dealing with, with Macs in some cases, so they have to image and do all sorts of things, but that's the job they do in the summertime. And it's part of what they do and it gets done. And if other schools do it, it might be good to see how they accomplish it. And again, going back to it's a big investment, it's, it's, it's a big thing to expect that these go home for the summer and nothing happens.
So if I can just bring on your thinking, like, as I was sitting here thinking, how could we make this work too? You know, the notion occurred to me that we bring in summer help just for that purpose. I guess small.
I guess you would need to do your analysis before we would go there, right?
But I think, yeah, I'd like to see us look into it. And I don't know, and I don't know if you have the data, the information that shows, on the first day of school, how many of these things that have been home over the summer are good to go?
Yeah. So, shall we come back to revisit this?
Yeah, can I just ask you a question? I tend to agree with you, Kathy, especially as an accountability piece. So it's one thing to sign a contract and say, yeah, my parents will pay for this if I break it or whatever, kids don't really understand that. But to know that you're gonna have to turn it back in at the end of the year, that, you know, people are gonna look at this, I think would be, might be a strong motivator. But how are you cycling them in and out now for regular maintenance? Is it like every few months, they kind of go in for repair, maintenance, refresh?
No, right now, I agree level, like, when we buy, we try to buy about 10% as a spare. And that normally fits the need. On top of that, we, the Chromebook was replaced, will be replaced every four years. So for the replace, for those retired, retired Chromebooks, we do not get rid of it for one more year. We keep them for one more year as a spare. So after one more year, you know, we have another kind of retired, so we put this, all this one on, on the, you know.
But not really though, right? Because you're eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, you have it for five years. So you're not really using it as a spare if you get an eighth grade, right?
No, what I mean is like, not only, I'm not only talking about the one-to-one program, I'm talking about overall the Chromebooks. So when that reaches the fourth year, we retire it, but we don't get rid of it, we keep it in stock as a spare. So that will serve.
And that's how we get our extras, those are our extras.
So within that four-year cycle, they're, they never come back for regular maintenance or upgrading? Oh, okay.
But right now.
So only if there's a problem.
Yeah, the, the Chromebook, we push out update automatically. So I drive their online, maybe you'll get the latest update, we do, we do maintain that way.
Guess so.
So I'm asking again, shall we bring this back then, after we take a look at what the cost would be to, to do this?
Yeah, but, I mean, respectfully, you know, I'm hoping that it's not a, an additional cost without looking at what is, I don't know what your folks do in the summer, I don't know what.
I can give you a list, I have a spare list.
I'm sure you do have a list, but.
It's, it's a huge, it's a busy, busy season for, for IT in the summer. It's probably, yes, heavy-duty summer work.
Yeah, it's always a busy time for us. My team, they don't, they don't take vacation in summer just because of workload.
Is it busy at the very end of the school year?
Much easier because summertime is only time, you know, we can take down network to serve.
No, I mean, at the end of this, like, say, the first three weeks in June.
Yes, because a lot of people take vacation, those are the time, you tend to take down the, the network, all the big stuff.
So, I don't know, I think we need to really look at the whole staffing anyway because, you know, I've said this a thousand, hundred times and you get sick of hearing me, I think there should be a support person in every single school anyway to service these, everything, just sit them in a school. I think there should be a support person in every single school anyway, to service these, everything, just sit them in a school. But.
I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's, as digital technology gets broader and broader and broader, I think, you know, probably need support, and there's going to be things that break down, things that, and like teachers, even today, we're saying, we have to bring in teachers from another room to sort of troubleshoot.
Yep.
And if, you know, if an IT person is not available, then it either gets fixed because someone knows what they're doing, or they have to sort of wait. And that sounds like, it sounded like a staffing issue. It sounded like there just wasn't enough support in each building.
And I guess the question is, how do other districts do it? Like, instead, instead of us being insular.
Yeah.
You know, what's the model, and what are the best practices out there? But, like, it's disturbing that we, we, if we need more support for digital that way to IT support, if we need it, I don't know why we aren't putting that as a, you know, a priority, right? So I would say, yes, please find out.
Okay. And we'll take a look too, what some of the other districts are doing with regards, like, looking at a hole in Concord IT, Littleton, like, just different areas, that's what they're doing. Yeah. So we can take a look at that and do a revisit.
And the maintenance plan, so what was it that was that, why was that on there?
I, was that what you were talking about, about how they're cycled through?
Yes, I think that that's what, that's what.
Probably.
Oh, okay, yeah, that was how we started.
And then how, and then Chi, at the end of, um, so it's four years, and then there are kind of backups for a year, right?
Yeah.
And then, do we, excuse me, sell them?
We surplus them.
We surplus, now we surplus them?
Yes, yes.
Great. Okay, well, that's a big deal. Oh, no, don't, don't worry.
I may have missed it. The, the last overdue column?
Yes.
What is that?
That is actually the, what, uh, discussed, we do not replace everything based on age. For example, a lot of their, uh, not a lot, so since they are mostly like, you know, we feel like, oh, this is kind of old technology, doesn't need to be replaced. But based on that formula, for example, like, you know.
So they're overdue for replacement?
Yes.
It's not like, I, I, okay, I was.
But it doesn't mean that you have to do it. It's just, it's just that it's overdue, that's all that, that column meant.
Yeah, but it wouldn't make sense to do it.
Right.
No.
Okay. I did, I do remember that part of the conversation.
All right, so other questions, let these poor people go. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chi, thanks, Pat.
Okay, the next item under our, it was, no, Pat can't leave. The track and field revolving account, so this came up based on the Q and A that was put together that you all saw for the stabilization fund. There's also money that the district takes in when it rents out the field. And so this was a request to have a separate account set up for any renting fees. Do I get it?
Yes.
Anything you want to please do?
If you want to establish a revolving account for that purpose, you need to vote it.
So, does everybody understand what?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so, so when you get gate receipts, if you want the money to go into the stabilization account, you have to set up a revolving account so it evolves from the gate.
Two different things.
Okay, see, that's why I'm.
So this, go ahead, Pat.
Explain it to me.
Well, you do understand that gate receipts, um, are more than just gate receipts for the field. They're, when the gate, when we call them gate receipts, they're basketball.
Basketball. It's funny, we take in for people who come and see the sports events.
Right.
Exactly.
Yes.
So not everything that comes into that account is all.
Football.
Is all football.
Yeah.
Football or whatever, sport. And then, um, the other thing, the other component would be the rental.
Yes, the rental is the question.
Right, when, you know, when sports organizations come in and they use our facility to run their camps or whatever they might be. And we could specifically put the revenue in that account.
So I think that was the point. So you know, it kind of is, it's within keeping with what we're doing with all the other fees that we take in, they're all pretty much segregated so that we can track them. So that was the, the.
Almost like a housekeeping item.
No, I think that's a good, yeah.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about, and does anybody have any questions about it? And how do you feel about this? Because personally, I want to do it, but I'm only one of eight. So you guys have to weigh in on whether or not this is something you'd like to do, to evaluate it, or not. Because I'm going to need a vote. I'm going to ask for a vote.
It should be relatively simple. I mean, we're just sitting up in the other room.
Exactly.
It's all of this.
Yep.
Just, just for clarification, that's all. Good?
Yep.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to, um, create a track and field revolving account? For the purpose of tracking.
And fielding.
I was going to hit you.
Uh, yeah, for facilities rental and receipts.
For the track and field.
For the track and field.
Specifically. Okay, does anybody want to move that?
Someone.
Alita's going to ask me what the heck I just said.
She good.
Got it.
Establish track and field revolving account for the purpose of tracking, um, gate receipts and rentals.
Rental fees.
Facility rentals.
No, not gate, not gate receipts, because we don't collect.
Gate receipts relating to the track and field.
To the track and field. So it's all track and field? Yep. Just track and field.
Because that large revolving account that we have right now is the, is the receipts, gate, right?
But it's, it's commingled.
Right.
And this pulls it out.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got a motion.
I'll second.
Absolutely.
Um, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Pat, thank you all.
So, so can we revisit this?
Yeah.
Establish track and field revolving account for the purpose of tracking gate receipts and rental fees for the track and field facility.
That's it. Thank you.
There's a lot of track and field though.
Lot of track and field, but clearly it's for the track and field. Um, June, okay, so the FY nineteen School Committee Goal Setting Workshop, um, I think I already touched on this. I don't think there's anything more to say. You all know where it is, you know what we're doing. Um, be patient, Dorothy is coming again. We'll be going through a module on roles and responsibilities, like we do every single year. Um, but it's a good, it's a good bring your questions, um, and your willingness to collaborate. We may not finalize everything, but we'll get a, a good, good amount of work done. And I think it's good too, because superintendent's likely going to be sharing with us her, um, district improvement plan. Um, so that will help inform some of what we're doing, and I think what will be, uh, the work is going to be determining, and we do this every year, what do we own and what does the administration own? And we always kind of cross over, and then Dorothy pushes us back in our own little box. But it's a good experience, because it just solidifies, this is what we own.
We've gotten a lot accomplished at those workshops.
Usually, yeah.
Very productive.
So, um, thank you all for that. We do not have any old business on the, um, agenda. We've got a personnel subcommittee report.
Just briefly, we met, um, Superintendent Pledgey, I think on the fourteenth, and basically to have a preliminary conversation about her, um, evaluation plan for next year.
Perfect. Um, correspondence, does anybody have anything of, of note that they want to share? Um, consent agenda. Minutes of May ninth, twenty eighteen, and the warrants of May twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, unless there's some changes, concerns. We're going to assume that those are approved. Items for next agenda.
Can you pull that up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Are you for next agenda?
She took mine. I gave her the laptop. It's okay, because she didn't have hers. So one of the things I want to share with you is, um, we will be, um, talking about our new subcommittee forums. Which subcommittee? I'm thinking of a couple, one or two, um, one new advisory that, um, that I'm hoping that you'll be interested in, um, but we'll, we'll talk about that. And then, uh, I would love to try to provide some continuity for some of those subcommittees, but I also want to make sure that everyone who's been here for at least a year has an opportunity to move to another subcommittee, so you can see how another part of the district is run. Um, and then the new folks, um, we may double you up. Um, but I'll reach out and just touch base with folks. If you have a burning desire, let me know. I'm really looking for, what are your strengths? And what are the things you like to do, so that we can utilize those strengths for the full committee and the district? And Lynn, I'm going to replicate you and all your good note-taking. This year, guys, promised we're going to get those minutes done. I mean, we did, we did, not, no, personnel's a fabulous. Oh, post-a-child personnel. But at each, um, meeting, let's take care of those minutes. Um, and then I.
When is our next meet?
Well, the next meeting, um, is actually the sixth of June.
Just voted your new calendar.
Yeah, we have, we are the same, and I don't even have to, yeah.
So I, one of the things that we're going to do this year is to, um, um, change the timelines of the superintendent's self-evaluation and goals. Typically, we do those in October. And I'm wondering if they will, we should do that at the June sixth meeting? Um, or, um, is that our last meeting, the June sixth meeting?
No. No.
Okay, or at that?
There's a, there's a twelfth and then the twentieth.
The twelfth is goal-setting, and the twentieth is, um, our last school committee meeting of the year. That's on the calendar. If we need to add one, we could.
No, could we put it at the June twentieth meeting, and maybe, and that way personnel could make you for that, to go over it and approve.
And that would be her goals?
It would be the self-evaluation and the goals that would come out of that.
Yeah, but do you think we're going to, we're not going to need, I mean, we would, we would need more than one meeting or not, for the whole?
She's good. She, for, for the whole thing? Basically, what we've been doing is that the personnel subcommittee gets it, and, um, then we bring it to the school committee, uh, to review and approve. So we're not doing the whole goals as a committee, but the goals are predicated on, and these are the goals for the, um, the, the, um, the, the student learning goals, professional growth goals, and the district improvement plan goals that we base her written evaluation on. There may be other goals that come up through other things that go on. But it's to, um, to begin the, the state mandated process for superintendent evaluation.
And I'm kind of worried it's specific to the DES.
Yeah, but if we, in the past, we have gotten the late work done, um, in personnel, and then just brought it forward and, um, to school committee.
Okay, so you know what, um, why don't, so yes, put that on the twentieth, Alita, can we put that on the twentieth? And then.
Superintendent's self-evaluation and goals for FY nineteen, or the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
On six twelve or sixteen?
No, the six twenty, and then I'll, I'll send out dates for a personnel subcommittee.
Yep.
So the next meeting, um, subcommittee assignments and charges. Um, and also, I'd like to do the, um, school committee manual.
When, to?
For the sixth.
On the sixth, so for review, for edits?
Yeah, because it's brand-new. I mean, it's, it's not even a year old, so.
Okay, um, um, you know, um, we need to just send it out until we get feedback from folks.
Yeah, it's on the website. You don't even have to send it out.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's on the website in the member materials.
Yeah, just a reminder then that folks need to go through it and see if they have any, any questions, uh, any edits.
So that's on the sixth?
Yes, please.
So on the sixth, we have DECA, summer warrants.
Yep.
Healthcare Reform Act.
Yep.
Late starts.
Yep.
The District Improvement Plan.
Yep.
And the.
Subcommittee assignments and a review of the school committee meeting, but I don't think the school committee manual is going to be.
No, I think that we, we did that last year.
If there's suggestions, send them in.
Yeah.
But you know what, Alita?
And, um, we're going to have budget transfers on the sixth, right? Sixth, budget transfers.
So the late start report out, I do want to ask you about that. This is good to have this conversation out. So will you be bringing in some of the teachers to talk to us about what they're doing with late starts?
Oh, we definitely can.
Please, I would like to hear from the teachers. I think they had some.
I have a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and they were talking about it.
Yeah.
So let's bring them in. That'd be a nice gesture too, for them to know that we heard them. Um, and then, um, the, the district improvement plan is you sharing that with us, right?
Yep.
Um, and DECA is kind of a cool thing. Summer warrant signatures is just a quick vote.
Yep.
So there's no big deal.
We can, we can move it to the twentieth if you want to do it, just as long as it's done before your recess.
Yeah, I don't even think it matters, right?
It's timeless.
Um, and then the Healthcare Reform Act, we can talk about that. That might move.
That'd be you.
That'd be me, no, that, that'd be you. I put it on there. But we, I don't know that we need to, we need to get a, I don't know that we need to do that. I think we have, we have a bigger discussion. You and I.
Okay, all right. On the twentieth, uh, did we put sped updates? Joan would like to.
People's addresses update?
Pardon?
People personnel services update?
Yeah.
Perfect. Other than that, I think we're done. So.
Executive session.
Good Lord, would someone like Kathy like to move us into executive session?
I would.
Um, so we are going into executive session. We are not going to come back into our open, public session, because this topic would have a detrimental effect.
Okay.
On our litigating position.
So I think that we adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting, an enter-and-for-executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, George King versus Nishoba Regional School District, and Pat Maroney, Civil Docket number eighteen, CV six four three A. And the committee will adjourn in executive question, uh, session to include Pat Maroney and Anne Reese-Doyle.
And superintendent.
And Superintendent Pledgey.
Uh, second, please.
Second.
Thank you very much. Susan.
Yes.
Elaine.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike and Lauren, yes. Thank you all very much.